Thursday, December 17, 2020. invocation and pledge, Mr. Markantel.
Dear my gracious having a father, thank you so much for this great wonderful privilege to come here tonight to conduct the business of people who have a father. Thank you so much that we can live in a country where we can, we do have the freedom to come together and do business. We want especially thank you for the, this season here, heavenly father. And thank you so much for your son, Jesus, and assist all the greatest, most precious, sweet name of Jesus.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Markantel. I'd like to ask everyone to please silence their cell phones. And if anyone would like to speak on any particular item, there is a blue slip that you would fill out and someone will bring you up here. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. We're going to skip item four and we're going to come back at six o'clock for a public hearing. Item five, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits.
Second.
Mr. President, we have eight applications for liquor and beer permits. We recommend approval on all applicants.
I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Afshar. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carries?
Move on item six.
Item six, consideration of approving payments of all current invoices and advised regular monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carries? Item seven.
Move on seven.
Consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated November 19, 2020. I have a motion by Mr. Afshar and a second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion, any objection that motions have carried? Item eight, consideration of adopting resolutions approving the fiscal year 2021 annual budget in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act as follows. A, approve the proposed parish budget for fiscal year 2021. B, authorize the parish administrator, the parish treasurer, and our respective department directors to make changes within various budget classifications. And C, amend the fiscal year 2020 budget. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carries? Item nine, consideration of adopting an ordinance to rezone from agriculture to multifamily residential to allow multifamily residential development duplexes. I need a motion to approve with conditions. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carries? Item 10, consideration of adopting an ordinance to rezone from agriculture to light industrial to allow light industrial development. I need a motion to approve with conditions and I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Brain.
Do we have any, we don't have any blue slips or anything?
Do we have a blue slip on that?
No, sir.
Any other discussion, any objection that motion carries? Item 11. Move on 11. Take appropriate action to move the following voting precincts. A, number 663 and 664 to the Calcutta Emergency Response Training Center. B, number 309 East and 309 West to the Price Miller Rec Center. And C, number 405, 405 to the Maplewood Elementary School. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Spit and a second by Mr. Reshaw. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carries? Item 12. Move on 12. Consideration of adopting Executive Order 2020 to 2027 with wage and suspends the assessment of penalties and entries associated with 2021 business license fees and tax through June 30, 2021. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carries? Item 13.
Move on 13.
Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Calcutta Parish Hazard Mitigation Plan as revised. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carries?
Move on item 14.
Item 14, consideration of adopting an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 112 Audubon Avenue to mitigate future flood losses. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carries? Item 15.
Move on 15.
Consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement which outlines the duties and responsibilities of a coroner and the police jury in the operations of the Calcutta Parish Coroner's Office and forensic facility. I have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Afshar. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion have carried? Item 16, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding for removal of certain eligible storm debris from commercial and trailer park properties from state transportation routes. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Afshar. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith.
I would just want to kind of get a little, a little kind of clearing on that, exactly what is going on with this? This, this, like removing all the debris from actual commercial property that are on any kind of highways, state highways?
Yes, Mr. Smith, I can take that, Mr. President. So, yes, as you know, we've been in a lot of discussions and many of you have gotten several phone calls on how are we going to pick up commercial debris on state routes and the unincorporated areas? And I will tell you, over the last, I would say, month, Ms. Fontenot, Mr. Wainwright, and Ms. Shampo have really been working hard to get this MOU to where it's at today. We're looking right now that if you agree to, to get into this MOU, we will start picking up the commercial debris on those state routes and unincorporated areas. We did an estimate as recently as, I think, Monday or Tuesday of this week, and we are estimating about 40,000 cubic yards of debris, which would total cost around 890,000, and our cost share would be around 89,000. And we feel pretty confident that we will receive all of that back from the state as a reimbursement. And so that's kind of the bullet points on that, Mr. Smith, but I can answer any other questions you might have.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
That was it.
Mr. Barris.
Mr. Bowlen, when you say "we," who is that?
You mean actually picking up the debris? It would be our contractor.
Okay, so it would be the Crowder Gulf?
Correct.
What about, what about the properties where they, they had, you know, a bunch of trees down and then they said, well, you know, let's just clear the whole thing and pile it all up? And what, what, what are we doing with that?
I guess it would depend on if it was commercial, residential. I know Allen's standing up, so that's a cue to let me take, let him handle this question, so I will.
Mr. Allen, name and department, please.
This is Allen Wainwright, Director of Polyworks. That particular property is, is non-eligible at this time, the one you're asking about. So nothing's changing there. That, that, that particular property is not affected by this MOU because this is just a statement.
What about some, if they've, what about if they've had insurance money to demo and haul off their, their buildings?
Or as, as with parish routes with the commercial debris pickup, so sort of same policy that'll have to be followed per FEMA guidelines for reimbursement. We have to request or make sure that those companies, the, the commercial lots that would be picked up, acknowledge whether they have had some sort of reimbursement from insurance, and then if that, if that is the case, they're to forward that information and work that out on, with FEMA, basically providing that payment to the, to FEMA for reimbursement. All comes under the, no duplication of benefits process.
So is that like on the honor system or, I mean, was there something that, is there a flag that trips that says, oh, hey, we, this, this person received insurance benefits to?
Well, what happens is we are, and we've already completed this step, so the police jury mailed out a flyer that provided this information and guidance. As a particular spot is picked up, our monitoring company will flag that spot as, you know, and there will be a follow-up correspondence, six months out roughly, to, you know, try and make sure they're aware of the requirements.
Okay. All right, that's, that's a big question that I get and I'm sure there's some other folks who've gotten that. I appreciate you laying that out for me.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. Mr. Brain.
Mr. Brain, I have been asked about a lot of pieces of property. Can you give me a, on Gulf Highway, this would be a trailer park near Gulf Highway, on Gulf Highway?
It would be an old church.
Yeah, churches, we're still working out the definition of commercial when it comes to churches. That particular property, though, the reality is, it's not necessarily the debris. It was already partially picked up once, so it is eligible. The foundation debris that's there is the problem, not the, you know. Sorry, I didn't remember that off the cuff, I just.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Brain. Any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Item 16, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a memorandum, understanding. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, 17. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement for funding provided by the Act 45 of the 2020 Second Extraordinary Legislative Session of the Louisiana Legislature to be used for hurricane relief activities. I have a motion by Mr. Afshar and a second by Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion have carried? Item 18, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a low-income home energy assistance program agreement. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion have carried. Item 19, consideration of adopting resolutions approving the following items related to the Big Woods Vent and Road Bridge Replacement Project. Item A, act of sale agreement for the purchase of property and temporary construction servitude agreement. I have a motion for both bullets by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion, any objection? Mr. Barris, you, you had anything?
I thought that was 19.
19, A and B.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Item 20, take appropriate action on the following bids, quotes, and/or proposals received by the parish purchasing agent. Item A, November 18, 2020, overlaying of various roads in wards 5, 6, and 7. The parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $2,777,258.85 of Prairie Contractors LLC be accepted. Item B, November 24, 2020, proposals for the Facility Construction Project Management Services. And after review of proposals, the staff recommends the proposal of S, I mean CSR-S Disaster Recovery Management LLC be accepted. Item C, December 9, 2020, Nibblis Bluff Road Bridge Replacement and Realignment Project. The parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $6,496,940.25 LLC be accepted. I have a, I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Afshar and a second by Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carries? Item 21, consideration of adopting a resolutions of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Angie Quinlty, former Calcutta Parish Register of Voters. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Most of you knew Angie Quinlty, a very pleasant lady, always willing to help. I thought she did an outstanding job as a registrar of voters. You know, when she, when she was diagnosed with her illness, she put her faith in God and she fought it till the end. And so she will be missed for many reasons, but our thoughts and prayers go out to her family.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Is there any other discussion? I just want to say also too that Andy was, everything you said and much more, she really was a fighter for that, on that, when she caught the hat to counsel and everything, but she was a great person, always trying to help anyway she could. So is there any other discussion? I had a motion, did I have a, I need a motion in that? A motion and who was the second?
The second.
Okay, the second by Mr. Barris. Any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Item 22, consideration of adopting a resolutions of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Marion Butch Fox. Mr. Brain.
Turn your microphone on, Mr. Guy. Yeah, Marion, she was, I actually, I don't know, I got a long story, but I'll make it short. But my, the first time I really got to know her was when I was president in 2011 and my first function to go to was the, I know Brian will remember because he was driving and he missed the exit.
He never failed to mention that when you tell his story.
It was a national trade agreement, Brian? It was an economic agreement, I mean, us and the Acadian region. Right, and she was just real, real involved in the community and Jennings and that area. And she was, and actually I hunted with her parents and I never knew that her parents, that was her parents back in the day, I'm talking about in the early 90s. But she was just a great person and just continued to pray for her family and everything. And I appreciate the support, my colleagues for supporting this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Hayes. That motion will carry. We're going to adjourn for, I'm sorry, we're going to recess.
Till six o'clock.
And we'll come back until six. Now come back into session with the six o'clock public hearing. Serve as the Board of Review to hear the protests on current tax assessments. Mr. Gab.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once a year, usually in September, but this year since nothing's normal, we're doing it in December. The police jury sits as a Board of Review on tax valuations. This board is by law the Board of Review for valuation set by the assessor's office. If any property owner appeals those decisions, that initial appeal comes to you and then from this Board of Review, if either the assessor or the property owner does not like the decision you make, appeals it to the Tax Commission. Your role here tonight is to listen to the appeal that will be presented by Ms. Agulard and then review the evaluation and only the valuation and make a decision or determination at that point. To change evaluation, there must be evidence of the valuation. Ms. Agulard will serve as the advisor to this board because the law says that the assessor is the advisor to the police jury on these matters. So with that introduction, Ms. Agulard is going to present all the appeals to you tonight.
Okay, Ms. Agulard, name and, for the record.
Wendy Curfee Agulard, Calcutta Parish Assessor. So, good evening jurors, and I want to tell you, I know some of you, this is going to be the first time I've addressed you as new jurors. Although we are very late in the year, we haven't had the opportunity to address you until this point. And so I want to say thank you for being here. And I just want to have some general explanations. I know Mr. Gab explained what you, what your role is as the Board of Review, but there's a few things you need to know about our office to, to really understand what our process is. The role of the assessor's office is to value all of the property in our parish for taxing purposes, for property taxing purposes. The, the formula basically is assessed value, which is established by our office, times your tax rates, which are established by, say, you, the, the police jury or the sheriff or the fire district or so forth, equals your tax dollars. So the formula is value times tax rate equals the tax dollars. And so what, what we're here tonight for is to talk about the valuation if someone is disputing or protesting their value as the assessor's office has established it. As you know, 2020 was not a normal year. However, when the year started, 2020 was a state mandated reassessment year, okay? So we had completed our state mandated reassessment when COVID hit. And I, as your assessor, as well as president of the Assessors Association for 2020, along with many other assessors and lots of legal minds, went to, all the way up to the governor and said, is there any way we can postpone or skip this year's reassessment? And we were told, no, there's no way you can do that. It's constitutional mandate and the only way to postpone or skip that would be to have a constitutional amendment. So you are required to go ahead and complete your 2020 reassessment. So we did our reassessment starting 2020, but we wanted to be able to recognize that there were businesses that were suffering through COVID. So there is a statute that was established after the disaster of Katrina and we were able to use that statute to help start alleviating some of the valuation by applying economic obsolescence to some of those businesses that we saw were beginning to struggle due to the COVID regulations, okay? Then, of course, we began to send out notices and I'm sure Mr. Landry and I were just talking about a notice, that you received a notice at the same time the hurricane happened because our Board of Review, this particular Board of Review, was actually scheduled to start, our open book period in Board of Review was scheduled to start the day after Laura hit. And so our notices went out and everybody was getting them after Laura hit. All of our timing, everything that's required by statute for us to meet and you guys to perform your duties as a Board of Review had to all be changed, okay? And we began to use statute, Louisiana Revised Statute 1978.1, that's the one for the disaster, to adjust values based on Laura, okay? And we had to start rescheduling everything. And then we got hit by Delta. And so then we had to start again, okay? So it's been obviously an unprecedented year for everyone, but at this point, we're trying to get to close our tax roll and, and all of this stuff has to happen prior to that. And once we can do that, and this is something that you and I were talking about, once we can do that, then the tax collector, the sheriff, will be able to send out notices. And so for those of you who are getting calls from your constituents, the notices have not gone out because we have not been able to complete this process. And once we can get this whole process completed, we will then provide our tax roll to the Louisiana Tax Commission. The commission will then approve our tax roll and the sheriff will then be able to send out the notices. And those notices will have new due dates. So no one is being penalized for not having their notice in their hand or paying their notice by December 31 of this year. So I wanted to make sure you guys understood that, okay? Nobody's being penalized. There will be a notice that goes out sometime after the first of the year and it will have a new due date on it, okay? So I want you to feel free to tell all of your constituents that, that we will get to it, but it will be after the first of the year, okay? So now, in the process of reassessing property, what we did was we did an automatic adjustment of every property in this parish, okay? So we, we did an analysis on the basis of some of the things that Florida has done in the past and made an adjustment to all the properties initially. So we completed that part of our reassessment process. And then what we did was we set up a tier system for those who had more substantial damage and for them to be able to provide us the information on their more substantial damage because we don't have the right to go into anyone's house, we have to be invited in. But the property owner needs to let us know what's going on on that inside. I can see a blue roof, but it may be completely gutted inside and I won't know that unless the property owner provides me that information. So we've set up a disaster application and a tiering system to go, to allow all the property owners who have more substantial damage than what we've already reduced for, to be able to apply for that, have us look at their property and be able to adjust it further, okay? So those are very important things I wanted you guys to know. So in the beginning of this packet, you will see orange, an orange tab. These, there are, I think, about 25 properties here. I'm going to ask if Mr. Derek Dislin is here to discuss these. These are all the same tax rep. If you want, I can go through each individual property, but I'm going to basically tell you the same thing for every property. Mr. Dislin, I believe, sent this appeal just to protect his, his property owner's rights in case later he's not happy with the value adjustments we make for hurricane damages. And so he has not provided me any documentation. I have provided him information on giving us more detail if there are more damages than we've already allotted for in the valuation reduction. But unless he were here right now to talk about these individual properties, I'm going to request that in bulk you uphold my valuations and let this move forward to the Tax Commission.
Move on that. Second.
Any, and I'm more than happy to answer questions.
Okay, I got a motion. For Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont on Ms. Agulard's suggestion. To uphold, to uphold. Is there any discussion?
It's for this first page that is all Mr. Derek Dislin, and I hope I'm saying his name correctly, for all of these appeals.
Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry. He is, he's a tax rep, a representative for these particular companies. I believe he's from Houston.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Okay.
I'm going to move on. The next tab, I believe, is a light green tab you will have. It's labeled Interfin Field Services. There are one, two, three, four, five, six of these parcels as well. Interfin filed a multi-parish lawsuit in 2000. I'm sorry, I was looking for my attorney. In 2017 or 2018. in 2017 or 18, I believe. They appealed to the tax commission. The tax commission upheld our values here in Calcasieu Parish, but Interfin appealed to the court, really based on other parishes, not Calcasieu. But they continue, as long as that appeal, that court case is outstanding, they continue to appeal in Calcasieu every year. And so at this point, unless there was someone from Interfin, oh, there you are, I'm sorry, you stepped away from where I was looking for you. Unless there was someone else from Interfin here, which I don't see, I would request that you uphold our valuations and--
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Ms. Agalard.
Thank you. So the next one is a light pink tab. This is all St. Charles Gaming, which is the Olive Capri. It's personal property as well as real estate. And basically, I am working with the Olive Capri on their hurricane damage. They just need a little more time to present information to me, and I need more time to work it. So we are working together, and I actually do have their tax rep, Zach Simmons, is here if you have any questions for him. But we just ask that you uphold the valuation as we continue to work together to, to work on the hurricane damage.
Motion to uphold. I have a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Ashton. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Ms. Agalard.
Arena Road, let's see. I don't, I'm not familiar with this tax rep. Is Francis Guin?
Sulfur.
Okay. Arena Road is a property that is in the sulfur area that was bought several years ago to put a hotel on, and they basically are disputing the valuation, although you will see in my packet that we have comps backing up the value of this property. They want, they think that, well, it doesn't matter. I can uphold my valuation, so I'm just going to ask you if you will uphold the valuation and move this forward, please.
No move. We have a motion by Mr. Markantel, and a second by Mr.--
Okay, Mr. Araby.
Louis, I'm sorry. Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Landry.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Agalard.
Yes, sir.
All right, now that one says, I mean, I read a little bit of this.
Sure.
He's even got a picture of himself in his empty hotel room and an empty parking lot, I guess.
Yes, sir.
But it says this is vacant land.
This is vacant land.
So this isn't even, he owns hotels, but he hasn't built here.
Correct.
Well, I don't know, there's not, I don't really know how, how good of a case he's going to be able to make on a piece of vacant land. I mean, it's probably kind of worth what it was worth a year or two ago.
Yes, sir.
Couldn't have changed very much.
Not much, sir.
But I guess, hey, it doesn't hurt for him to try.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carries.
Okay. This is Country Oaks Mobile Home Park, Fairview Estates Mobile Home Park, and Smith Village. Mr. Araby.
I'm Brian Araby here on behalf of my clients. They own four mobile home parks. Fairview Mobile Estates, there's two of those, North and South, those are out on Tom A. Bear Road, one at the, there by KK's Corner, and one a little further south down by Goche Road. They also own Smith Village, which is on Nelson Road, and Country Oaks, which is out in the Topsy community. And the, the, I understand the assessors changed the way they're assessing mobile home parks this, this year in the, in their reassessment coming up, or that was taking place prior to the hurricanes. And, and the result is, is there's a pretty tremendous increase in the, in the, in the assessment. My clients are going to be facing more than tenfold increase in taxes in some cases. And, and so they, obviously, nobody wants a tax increase, but in a year of pandemics and a couple of hurricanes, it's especially more, more burdensome. And so the, and as, as Ms. Wendy mentioned, you know, this year is different, this year is strange, and, and we have, we have to fall under this, we're outside the normal parameters and the, the, than what reassessment is supposed to take place. And, but it's our position that the hurricane exception to the normal rules ought to be used to adjust the, the people's property taxes downward based on the, the damage caused by the hurricane. And, and in this particular case, that statute, that exception is being used to increase, as I said, more than fivefold in some cases, the, the assessment of my client's properties. And, and this is a tough year. This is, you know, there's a big demand for housing right now. There's a big demand for affordable housing, that's what my clients offer, and, and, and this only increases the cost and the expense of affordable housing in a, in a hurricane, in a year of, you know, two natural disasters and a, and a worldwide pandemic. And so we, we believe that, that, that this ought to not be, the statute that's set up to be able to lower people's taxes when their property is damaged ought not be able to be used to actually increase people's taxes. And that's 47 1978.1.
Mr. Araby, you have a question. Mr. Andrew Ponte.
Yes, sir. Mr. Araby, you said initially that it was a tenfold, then you went back and said fivefold. And so can you explain the discrepancy?
If you had, well, there's multiple properties. So it's not, we're talking about four assessments. If you have your materials that we sent in, I actually have a, a chart attached to the back that I can show you.
Mr. President, I'd, I'd like to look at this chart, but I'd like to hear from Ms. Agalard on, on that as well, of the increase, please.
If you don't mind, I don't have my chart. If you can, I'd like, I'd like to be able to say. Yeah, Fairview North is 126% increase. Fairview South is 103%. Smith Village is 356%, and Country Oaks is 537%. So the difference being, you know, in, in 2019, Country Oaks paid $1,600 in taxes. The anticipated bill for this year will be over $10,000. Fairview paid $8,000 in 19, and in 2020, it's going to be 18,000. And I know most of you are involved in business and run businesses, and, and that kind of increase is pretty tough to handle for any business on, on, on this kind of short notice.
Mr. President, I'd like to hear from Ms. Agalard on the--
Let's see if there's any other questions for Mr. Araby. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Araby? Okay. Ms. Agalard, please.
So if you remember, when I started my conversation with you, is that 2020 was a reassessment year, and we were mandated to reassess. That was prior to the hurricanes, it was prior to COVID. And we did reassess mobile home parks. We were having sales for mobile home parks that exceeded our valuation tremendously. And if you will look at the information that I provided, this is, again, the yellow packet, if you will look at the information that I provided, it, it is behind where Mr. Araby's information is. We have cash sales for these mobile home parks, in many cases, in millions and millions of dollars. And the valuations had to be adjusted because of that. Now, we did recognize the fact that with the hurricanes, there were, there was damage. And so they were a part of the group of properties that we reduced from the reassessed value, okay? So we did take that into consideration, and I have asked them that if they have more damage, that they can provide me information on, I am willing to adjust it further if I possibly can. But again, as we talked about in the beginning, this was a reassessment year, the values did go up on these mobile home parks because of the sale prices we were looking at, and the sales are provided to you in there. If you look at, I should have numbered these pages for you guys, because that would have been a little easier to find. But Fairview Mobile Home Park, North and South, sold for $11 million. The Smith Village sold for $4 million, and Country Oaks sold for 3.6. And our valuations were so far under that we had to make adjustments. So I do understand the concern about the increase in taxes. Unfortunately, because it was a reassessment year before everything started, and we were not able to skip or postpone that, those values went into play before we reduced for hurricanes. Questions? I'm more than happy to--
Mr. Andrew Ponte. Just, are there any other trailer parks that, that you had to do that this year?
All of them.
Okay.
All of them.
And there were others that had increases similar as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all of them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm more than--
When was the last assessment?
I'm sorry?
When was the, what year was the last assessments on these trailer parks?
The, these trailer parks have been under, honestly, they've been under assessed for a very long period of time, and we've made small adjustments, but we had to, when we started seeing these, these really high sales, we had to start looking at what was happening and why it was happening. And I think a lot of it had to do with temporary housing, and the man camp situation and things like that started bringing, but if you look at the valuations, we're still nowhere near this. We, we did not, it's not like we took these mobile home parks up to $11 million or, we just didn't do that. We, we tried to be mindful of the fact that it was going to be a large increase and, and not try to get, you know, up to that kind of valuation. But at the same time, when we were doing this, it was long before COVID and hurricanes. And, and I told you, I would have been the first one to try to postpone or skip this reassessment if there was any way to do it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion?
I ask that you uphold my valuations and move this forward.
Move, second. I have a motion to uphold by Mr. Stelly, and a second by Mr. Landry. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Ms. Agalard.
Yes, I think the next one on your list is going to be Phillips 66, and Mr. Chris Cisneros is here.
Mr. Phillips, state your name and business address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Chris Cisneros. I work for Phillips 66 Company. Our address is 2331 City West Boulevard, Houston, Texas, 77429.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the, of the jury. I appreciate this opportunity very much to speak with you. I do work for Phillips 66. I work in the property tax department. I've been there, and one of the properties that I work for the company is our Calcasieu, our Lake Charles Refinery here in Calcasieu Parish. And today I have a presentation to show you how I arrived at my value and, and what I believe the value should be. My colleague that also worked with me on this, there wasn't room for him to come into the room today, so he's out in the waiting room, but Mr. Adair also assisted me with this. So let me get going here. This is a, a chart showing the, the Phillips 66 refining segment. We're a, we have 13 refineries in the United States and, and Europe, and we have a global refining capacity of 2.2 million barrels of oil, crude oil per day. You can see that we have three refineries along the Gulf Coast. We have Sweeney, Lake Charles, and Alliance. Of course, Lake Charles is here, Alliance is in Plaquemines Parish, and Sweeney's just outside of Houston. A little bit of history about the Lake Charles Refinery. This refinery was built in 1941. There's over 1,100 employees and contractors here, and this refinery can process approximately 249,000 barrels per day of crude oil. And the next number there is called Nelson Complexity. The Nelson Complexity for this refinery is 9.5, and the equivalent distillation capacity is 2,363,000 barrels per day. I'll go, go into a little bit more detail on the Nelson Complexity in the next couple of charts, but we have access, obviously, to, to shipping crude in and out via pipeline, and also finished, finished products via pipeline, and also via water through our ports and barges and, and other, other third-party, third-party properties. Of course, the, the Nelson Complexity and why that's important, and why that's important and part of this discussion, is a measure of how well this refinery can convert crude oil and derivative products into, into things that consumers want to buy. How, how mu, it's, it's really to think of it as a way of, how can they take crude oil, which is some heavy sour sometimes, some, some really dirty crude oil, or even some light sweet crude oil, and how well can it convert it to gasoline, diesel, jet fuel? So there is a process for calculating that number, and it's a, it takes a measure of all the different processing units we have out there at the refinery. So without going into the math in great detail, you can see that there's a different factor applied to the different processing units we have at our refinery. So if you add all those numbers up and divide by the crude distillation capacity, you come up with a 9.5. Now, that number comes into play when you look at how this refinery is, fits in the Gulf Coast against other refineries. The Lake Charles refinery is a 9.5, but just as a comparison, the other, other refineries in Lake Charles, the PDV Americas Incorporated refinery is substantially larger than ours, but it's got an 11.6 Nelson Complexity index. It's that, in other words, they can, they can process a lot more crude, and also they can process it into more products that can be sold into the market. Also, there's another refinery, Transworld Oil USA. This is a very small refinery, and their Nelson Complexity is at 1.5, so they may only have one or two vessels out there. But if you look down the last grouping there, the median refinery in the Gulf Coast region is about 239,000 barrels a day. So, so we're almost at the same crude capacity as, as the median refinery, but most other refiners have a little bit more complexity index. In other words, they have, they have more processing units than we do at this refinery. This chart just shows you some basic refining economics. I mean, obviously, you take crude oil and you turn it into the products people want. You want gasoline, you want jet fuel, you want diesel, and, and more and more in the United States, ultra-low sulfur diesel is, is demanded by consumers. There's very few people that, that want diesel that is not ultra-low sulfur diesel. So a little bit about Louisiana property tax law and how, how Phillips 66 views how this, how we should value our refinery. You know, the state constitution requires that the fair market value for the property tax valuations, except for agriculture, horticultural, marsh, and timberlands. So in other words, we're trying to, we're trying to get to the fair market value, which is the price a willing buyer would pay a willing seller in an open market, and neither one of those under duress. The law further states that each assessor shall follow the uniform guidelines, procedures, rules, and regulations in determining the fair market value of all property subject to taxation within her respective parish or district. Such fair market value shall be determined by the market approach, the cost approach, and/or the income approach to value. There's also some further Louisiana Tax Commission rules regarding how the, how these, how the rules that they promulgate are be to apply, are to be applied in the appraisal. You know, one thing I'll talk about is a loss in value. This is the obsolescence, which is a loss in value due to any cause, and, and primarily this falls under, our refineries valued under Chapter 25, which are general business assets. So the first, the first indicator I'd like to discuss is the sales comparison, which is the market approach concept. We've analyzed some refinery sales that have occurred in the United States in the past few years, and we've limited, limited those to-- few years, and we've limited those to refineries that are more than 50,000 barrels a day that sold from 2015 to 2019. And we look for any kind of commonalities with our refinery, or unique attributes comparable to our refinery, so that we could say, okay, this is an indicator of what we think this refinery would sell for. But like anything, they're always different, so we, when you're doing your appraisal analysis, you adjust those other sales to your subject. In this case, our Lake Charles refinery is the subject. We did have to do some adjustments in some cases. Some other refineries that were in the market approach were in other states or other parishes. They were a different age. They also had different complexities. So we did make some adjustments. And in the end, we weighed or assigned, and say, this is the most comparable sale to the Lake Charles refinery. So anything that we see in the next page in blue is, we believe, is the most comparable. Yellow is less comparable, and anything that's highlighted in black is probably not really comparable at all. So I'll go ahead and just show you all these. Here in Louisiana, there are some other refineries that have sold. The Chalmette refinery, which is in St. Bernard Parish, sold in 2015. In California, there's a Torrance refinery that sold in 2016. The Coke, I can't pronounce that, but it's in Hawaii, and it sold in 2016. And then in Washington State, there was the Tacoma refinery that sold in 2019. And then in Pasadena, Texas, right outside of Houston, there was a refinery that sold in 2019. And then the Martinez refinery, this was a Shell refinery in California that sold in 2019, but it spilled over into 2020, as there were some other commitments both companies agreed to as part of the sale. One thing I want to point out is, and I mentioned this a second ago, is all the refineries that you see here that sold have an ultra-low sulfur diesel unit. That's a significant difference from our refinery, in that our refinery, Lake Charles, does not have a ultra-low sulfur diesel unit. So what is the ultra-low sulfur diesel unit? Well, here in the United States, we've, the Environmental Protection Agency has sought to limit the amount of sulfur in diesel. So starting in 2006, the law said you had to have, you had to start using this ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel in on-road vehicles. So this chart here is a production of diesel by sulfur content, and the green line is your ultra-low sulfur diesel. You can see that in 2006, 2005, 2006 timeframe, the production started of this ultra-low sulfur started to increase dramatically here in the United States. And the black line is the greater-than-500 parts-per-million sulfur. This is the dirty stuff. That started to decline just as dramatically, even from 1993 forward. So this just gives you a visual of what is required, and what people are producing in the country, the United States, and what they're, versus the change from the really dirty diesel that used to be produced prior to that time. So go back to my chart here. The cost of cure for the no, the cost of cure is a way of deducting value from a property that needs something. In other words, this refinery needs to have an ultra-low sulfur diesel unit to sell diesel in the United States now. Currently, the refinery has been selling a lot of its diesel to foreign countries. They ship it out to Africa, South America, but even a lot of foreign countries are starting to convert over to low-sulfur diesel spec. So we installed a ultra-low sulfur diesel unit at our refinery in Sweeney back in 2006, and the cost was approximately $195 million at the time. So we estimated that our replacement cost and adjustments for size for an equivalent type unit here at the Lake Charles refinery would be $259 million. So here's our sales comparison approach to value table. Again, the items in blue, we believe, are most comparable to our refinery, which is the first column, and we made adjustments for both the size, the non-refining assets. In a couple of cases, there was pipelines and terminals that sold with these refineries. We backed that out of their sales. We also made adjustments, as I told you, about the Nelson complexity. Are these refineries comparable? Are they more sophisticated? Are they less sophisticated? We made adjustments that were there. And in the end, we had an adjustment for the sales prices to the subject per EDC. That's the equivalent distillation capacity. And those are the numbers in blue there, about 3/4 of the way down the page. You can see that they ranged from $145 million to about $462, $145, excuse me, to $462. So using the sales comparison approach to value, we believe, and if you only use this, it indicates the value of the Lake Charles refinery is about $357 million. Now, that's not the only approach, because as stated in one of my slides, we have to look at the sales.
Is he selected as left?
Yes, sir.
Number four, three, three, seven.
Yes, sir. Sure. As we've stated, you know, we're supposed to look at the three approaches to value: the sales comparison, the cost approach, and the income approach. So let me move to the cost approach. When we talk about depreciation, that's the loss in value due to any cause, including physical depreciation, functional obsolescence, and external obsolescence. Functional obsolescence is a loss in value due to the lack of utility or desirability of part or all of the property inherent to the improvement or equipment. It is estimated to cost to cure, or it is estimated by cost-to-cure deficiency. External economical obsolescence is a loss in value due to causes outside of the property. So those would be, you know, say, government regulations or things like that that are outside of the refinery itself. The appraisable, the appraisal principle of substitution underlies all three approaches to value, which says, "A property's market value tends to be set by the cost of acquiring an equally desirable and valuable substitute property, assuming that no costly delay is encountered in making the substitution." In other words, I'm not going to pay any more for a property than I can get a property of equal utility, than I could pay for a property of equal utility. Okay, so the first deduction we believe we should take is the functional obsolescence. This refinery is, as I said, was built in the 1940s. It has some, obviously, it's constrained as far as the space goes. It's just north of the interstate, so they can't expand it to the south. We've got other companies that own property to the north and to the west, so it's, really don't have a lot of room to add a lot of stuff, a lot of equipment, or do a lot of repairs. And because of that fact, there is additional costs associated with working in tight spaces and working in the middle of an operating refinery. So we applied an 8% obsolescence to, in the first part of our calculation for it. The second part is, again, I visit this no-ultra-low sulfur diesel unit. You know, this is, again, as I said, it's a major hindrance to us. You know, we cannot, while we do sell some of this heavy diesel that we produce, this dirty diesel, more and more of the country is moving over to cleaner diesel, and even more and more of the world's moving over to the cleaner diesel. We made a correction in this approach, just as we did to the sales comparison approach, and this is just recapping the specs that are required. Now, there has to be no more than 15 parts-per-million, whereas typically, this refinery produces over 500 parts-per-million. Again, this talks about the cost of cure, and I already showed you the cost for an equivalent, what we believe an equivalent ULSD unit would cost. And this is that chart again that I showed, the increase in the ULSD production, and how the dirty diesel greater-than-500 PPM has declined substantially since 1993. So this is, again, a repeat of that. So one other thing to consider is when people are looking at spending their money to invest, where do they want to invest? Do they want to invest in something that is going to give them a high return, or do they want to invest in something that's going to give them a low return? Are they going to want to choose safety? Are they going to want to choose something that has a lot of risk? So one of the methods we apply, external obsolescence, is to look at how refining has returned some of these economic indicators in the past five and three years versus other companies out there that you can invest in. So there's a lot of numbers there. This is a pretty busy chart, but at least the top ones, you can see that the iShares Core S&amp;P 500 has returned over the last five years about 76%, whereas refining has returned about 22.5%, which is a reduction of 77%. So really, if you go through all those numbers, you can see that refining doesn't have as big a return, it doesn't have as a net, high as a net margin as other companies that are available for investments. Their return on assets is a little bit less, their return on equity is less, their return on investment's less. So really, you add all those together, you come up with a total estimated external obsolescence of 44%. That's just a way to say, okay, what do people, when they look at this, what are they going to want to pay for something? And this is a way to compare the refining industry versus other places where they can invest their money. This is particular to Phillips 66, and this ends as their capital program. In other words, how much of our own money are we reinvesting every year in our assets and refining and our midstream? And over the past few years, most of our, even Phillips 66 is invested in mostly in items outside of refining. They've invested in midstream, and we've built a lot of pipelines to bring crude oil from West Texas down to the Gulf area. We've invested in a lot of fractionators. We've invested in other terminals and tank farms and things like that. While we still invested in refining, we haven't nearly spent as much in refining as we had in midstream in the years past. Another thing to consider is the U.S. gasoline is in a long-term structural decline. That's one thing that we've seen in our information. The demand for gasoline isn't increasing in the United States. It's actually flat and maybe shrinking a little bit. You can drive down the highway, and you see more and more Teslas out there than you used to. There's also a lot more fuel-efficient vehicles than there used to be. So there's a long-term structural decline. In other words, there's not, it's probably not going to increase from here on out. It's anything, it's going to decline over time, and a lot of countries that we ship products to, that we make at our refinery are.
Mr. Cisneros.
Yes, sir.
How much more do you have? We have other appeals that we have also.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I can speed this up a little bit, so I would, just about another 10 minutes? Is that okay with you? I'll go faster.
I'm sorry, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And you know, we go through this every year, Mr. Gabb, and I'm going to tell you, this is a tremendous waste, not so much my time, because that's what I got elected for. I'm supposed to sit here and listen to this. But we really have no authority. We cannot grant what this gentleman's asking for, can we?
Well, you are putting a bind. State law does put you in a bind.
They do, and it needs to be changed, and every year, Ms. Aguilar comes down here, and I say the same thing, and it's not her fault. She's just doing her job. But really, this is a complete waste of everyone's time, because everything that gentleman has just said for the last 45 minutes, he's going to have to repeat to the state. Who really has? The Tax Commission's the one that has authority here, not the police jury.
You are set up as the board of review, so unfortunately, by state law, you are to listen to the appeals, and base your decision on the advice given by Ms. Aguilar, but yes...
We have no authority.
You have the authority to uphold Ms. Aguilar, or decrease it based upon valuations. However, you are putting a bind, that you're kind of giving this on a moment's notice. You don't have a whole lot of time, and I agree with you.
No, you don't, and it doesn't really matter what we say, because it's going to go to the Tax Commission.
Whoever loses here today will probably go to the Tax Commission.
And I know that's not anybody's fault here, that we're just doing, but somebody needs to get in touch with our state representatives and senators. They need to change the law to where these folks don't have to go through this. They can meet with the tax assessor, and after that, it should go straight to the Tax Commission. This is happening all over the state. You're wasting businesses' time all over the state that are having to go through this basically for nothing, and it happens year after year after year. You know, just because that's the way it's set up doesn't mean it shouldn't change. It needs to change.
Thank you, Mr. Landry.
Thank you.
I'll hurry up, Mr. President.
Mr. Cisneros, I'm going to ask that you kind of wrap it up.
Yes, sir.
Because we have other appeals.
Well, anyway, here's a reconcile, all that information I provided to you. We believe the refinery is worth about 400, the market value of the Lake Charles refinery is $437 million, $437,314,000. Now, the item in yellow is less, the ITIPS that we have out there, the industrial tax exemptions, but really, the top number is the one that we believe the refinery should be valued at versus what Ms. Aguilar has on there at the assessor's office. So we checked, you know, as I said, we went over costs of sales, we analyzed what it would cost to fix the refinery, we analyzed where the market's going, and we did a reasonable check to make sure that all of our logic was appropriate, and we believe it is. So going forward, we respectfully request that the board lower the value on the refinery to $437,314,000 for tax year 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Cisneros. Mr. Anderson.
Compared to $545 million or $1.2 billion? I'm confused.
Well, currently, the assessor's office has $1.2 billion on the market value.
Right.
My initial rendition of the property, which is required by statute, had about $500 million. But after time and further and more detailed analysis, we think it should be even lower than that. It should be about $437 million.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm going to bring one person up. He was supposed to come first. I just want, Mr. Stouts.
No, that's the other one.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. Ms. Aguilar.
Oh. Okay. So as you heard about Phillips, Mr. Cisneros, let me start by saying, for personal property, business assets, which includes manufacturing facilities, the state of Louisiana is a self-reporting state. Every year, and Mr. Landry knows this because he has a business, and any of the others of you who have a business know, every year, you get a green and white form from our office to let us know what your assets are, what you've acquired new, what you've disposed of, and we use the cost approach to valuation with those assets and depreciation to establish the valuation of your property. That's required in what we do. We use the cost approach to valuation, number one, because we're self-reporting, number two, it's too hard to get income from any particular business to use the income model for valuation. And most of the time, especially in industrial sales, there are very few sales to be able to provide a sales analysis. So the cost approach to valuation is what's used in business assets. We follow the Louisiana Tax Commission's rules and regs and guidelines, and based on the self-reporting from Phillips themselves, Mr. Cisneros, you will see the valuation of, and this is what he is asking you to change, the 1.256, 549133. So it's $1.2 billion in valuation that he would like to have changed based on what he presented to you today. What I will say to you is, we have taken into account, there is depreciation that's established in the tables that we use. We depreciate things down based on age, cost, so forth. So that's all been taken into consideration. In 2018, 19, and 20, Phillips did increase their assets, and those asset allocations did cause valuation to adjust. We have granted economic obsolescence for the last four years. Well, we've granted it before that, too, but over the last four years, we have increased their economic obsolescence based on some of these same arguments. However, at this point, we are too far... However, at this point, we are too far apart. There is no way that I feel comfortable in adjusting to this valuation or that valuation based on what on my knowledge of this property. So I'm going to ask you to uphold my valuation and allow this to move forward.
Go move.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by.
You have a question?
I do.
Mr. Ashton. A second by Mr. Ashton.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Andrew Punt.
What what's concerning to me is, and I agree, there is a big discrepancy. There's a wide gap. Has there been any discussions between Phillips 66 and your office challenging the differences?
Yes, sir. We we've had, and we can't come to an agreement at this point. So I have offered to Phillips to go out and get an independent industrial appraisal.
Okay. That's I would hope there would be some common ground, Mr. President. Again, I the presentation here, I thought, was very good. I get your point of of 1.2 billion. That is, we are way apart. I would like to see some type of common ground.
Right. And and I, Mr. Andrew Punt, just because you're asking, I did offer 30 percent obsolescence across the board.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Punt. Is there any other discussion? I have a motion and a second to uphold. That motion will carry. Okay.
I think the last, I think we're at the last one, Mr. Stutes.
Yes. I'd like to call Mr. Stutes up. I'm sorry. Would you state your name and business address for the record, sir?
Russ Stutes, 600 Broad Street. I represent Jason Williams in a property tax assessment appeal for his individual home. Real quick, everybody, I'm I'm going to pass around some documents if I could just get a little cooperation. And I promise not to take too much of y'all's time. This will be very quick.
We got some more, Tom?
Take one and pass it down.
Please, please. Thank you.
I have one for you, Ms. Wendy.
Okay. Here. I'll go this way.
And would y'all make sure staff have one?
Well, we do this for just a minute.
Well, I appreciate it. I didn't get those two copies.
I didn't help.
Got this one and this one.
Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, here's that on the left hand.
Perfect.
We have.
I'm going short yesterday.
out. So I've put four documents in front of y'all on, and again, my name's Russ Stutes on behalf of Jason Williams. You'll see a map of the area where my client's property is. It's a street called Sassifras Way in the Graywood neighborhood. And then you will have the assessment on that property, and you will have the appeal that we filed to Ms. Aguilar. And then just some internal data that I ran on some comparable sales in the area regarding his assessment. So my client has a house located at 3816 Sassifras Way in that Graywood subdivision. Currently, the total assessment fair market value levied on that house is $1,976,000. $186,000 of that is for the land. $1.79 million is for the improvements or the building. This comes out to roughly $322.45 per square foot. And we have submitted an appeal before Ms. Aguilar in the board now today to reduce that valuation to $175,000 for the land and $1.225 million for the improvements, for 1.4 million total at roughly $228.46 per square foot. And I do want to hit on something that was discussed in the prior presentation about fair market value. This is just simply what the price would be if a willing buyer exchanged this property with a willing seller. And Ms. Aguilar, actually, in the first argument, touched on this in the trailer park issue and touched on some of those comparable sales at 11 million. And I think when you look into the data and the situation, that rings very true for my client's property. So I'm going to start real broad on this. And if you go to my little data sheet that I've got, I pulled.
Thank you.
Pulled as many sales as I could find on homes worth more with more than 4,500 square feet in the southwest Louisiana area. And you'll see some averages that I ran down there, just to kind of give you an idea of what the average price of property in southwest Louisiana is. And that's, you know, $208 and change per square foot for all of southwest Louisiana, 4,500 square feet and up, 216 and 25 cents for average of 5,000 square feet and up, and 281.92 for 6,000 square feet and up. And I've also kind of included some weighted averages for your review, because, you know, in the accounting world, we do like to take in weighted averages, because like anything, there's always outliers.
Mr. Stutes, I have one question for you right now. Mr. Brain.
Russ.
Yeah.
Is that on a five-acre tract?
It is on a five-acre tract, yes. And that's the whole neighborhood is just five-acre tracts.
I know the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So on these these comparables, though, they're on five-acre tracts or just lots?
They're just lots.
Okay.
So you do have a little bit of a different situation, but, you know, the, and so, you know, that this is just kind of, that's the the top of the tree, right? So if we narrow this to an even more comparable segment, we go to Graywood recent sales. We see that in average, the Graywood neighborhood is putting out houses at roughly $170 per square foot. And then if we narrow this down even further, we take the assessments that are levied against my client's neighbors, the people that he's, you know, walking down the street with. And they are, all of these averages across the board are just well below what my client's property is assessed at. And honestly, our 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 appeal proposal doesn't even seek to bring it in line with the averages across not only the parish or the southwest Louisiana area or Graywood or even his neighbors. It's, you know, our assessment or our proposal brings it to $228 per square foot, which is still in excess of what the averages are around this area and and with his own neighbors, and represents a very, very fair proposal about what this property should be assessed at. And I do want to kind of touch on some of the outliers that you'll see in there. You can go look these up on Ms. Aguilar's very helpful GIS system at the assessor's website in the southwest Louisiana area. Those houses with the the very high, the $300 per square foot, those are all waterfront properties. This is not a waterfront property. It is not on the golf course at Graywood. It doesn't have any of the hallmark characteristics of a property that is going to get assessed at such a high value compared to the surrounding area and his own neighbors. So, you know, with all that said, we do think that this board is well within its rights to accept our revised proposal of the assessment. And if there are no questions, I will turn over the floor to Ms. Aguilar.
Is there any question for Mr. Stutes? I'm sorry, Mr. Barris.
So this would be different if you had an insurance claim, I guess, right?
That's not what I'm here to argue about.
I I get I get your point, though. You know, it doesn't have the same access to, you know, the course or the or the waterway. So, yeah, I appreciate that. That's, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Barris. Is there any other discussion?
All right, y'all. I thank y'all for y'all's time, and I hope I can get y'all to dinner sooner.
And your bag on the side, too, Mr. Stutes.
My head wasn't at that.
Ms. Aguilar.
Okay, so if you guys will take a look at the information we provided you. Basically, what we have here is Mr. Williams' house was roughly estimated at about $2.2 million. We have tried to work with Mr. Williams. I'm sorry, I have to take that off. We have tried to work with Mr. Williams a bit on his valuation. What you need to know about Sassifras is it is a very exclusive subdivision even amongst Graywood. It is one of the only sub internal subdivisions of Graywood that have four to five acre lots on it. It is, there are two tiers of property classes within Sassifras itself, and many tiers of homes and quality of homes that were built in the Graywood's different subdivisions, all the way from the Lemongrass subdivision up to Sassifras, along with the ones that are on the water as well. At this point in time, what we had, Mr. Mr. Williams built a brand-new house. It went on the tax roll for the first time in 2020. His mortgage company or attorney called last year and got an estimate on his property taxes for $2.2 million. He has submitted an insurance deck for us so that we can look at his insurance damages for the hurricane damages, which we're more than happy to do. But at this point in time, we feel that our valuation of the 1.9 is reflective of a very good value on his property, and we ask that I can I can have my appraiser come and talk to it in depth more if you would like all the information on the different subdivisions. But I'm guessing that's not necessarily something you want to do at this point in time. Okay, so if you have questions, I'm more than glad to answer them further. Otherwise, I ask that you uphold our value and let this move forward.
Move to uphold.
I have a motion to uphold by Mr. Sterling and a second by Mr. Marketill. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carries.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time and patience and look forward to seeing you again.
Before before we are joined, I just give Ms. Aguilar a minute. I just want to, you know, tell staff and their families and all the jurors and their families, I want to wish you a blessed and safe holiday season. And also to everyone of Calcasieu Parish, I want to wish everybody a blessed holiday season.
Merry Christmas.
We are now joined.